Anybody wish to speak? Ed?
Do I go anywhere?
Anywhere you like, you can sit at the table, you can go to the podium, your choice.
I'll sit at the table.
Okay.
Ed Baum, 20 Sunnyside Drive, co-chair of the Near East Side Neighborhood Association. Couple of years ago, the developers for this property came to a meeting of the Near East Side Association to discuss what their plans were. There were some concerns raised at that time because of the configuration of the plan unit development, of its height and the way it was set. I've had a chance to take a look at the new plans, and I think they very well fit in with the kind of thing that at least I want to see. We haven't had a discussion in the association, so I cannot speak for the association. But it does serve a purpose, the city. The units look as though they will fit within the general character of the neighborhood, and so I support it.
Thanks. Anybody else wish to speak at the public hearing? Okay. If that's the case, we'll shut this down and start with the regular planning commission. Let's see, we have a quorum. Anybody who's going to speak, please stand and be sworn in. Do you swear or affirm that what you'll say is the truth?
I do.
Okay, great. Okay. First, the case is 0813. This is diversified property, which we just had the public hearing on. This is for the final plat approval. I think the members have had a chance to look at it. We had some of our staff look at it. I know there was some commentary from the water and sewer department, sewer supervisor, which I think... Did these guys get a copy of that, or no? Do you want to fill in one?
I'll just come right up here.
Okay.
I could provide a copy right now of what Scott Lambert from our water and sewer department provided to me on Friday afternoon. I apologize for not getting it to you earlier. The discussion focused on the water and sewer lines that are going to form basically a spine, a backbone, along the five buildings on the southernmost end of it. What Mr. Lambert recommended is that the diversified properties, because it's going to be a PUD and a condominium association, that they own those sewer and water lines. Mr. Lambert said they will need to get what's called a PTI, a permit to install, from Ohio EPA up in Logan, and they will have some specific guidelines with how to install it and any dimension requirements, et cetera.
Okay. Yeah, I have a printed recommendation if you want this when you get a chance. Okay, Ed, do you want to add anything else?
The... I did... I sent out a request to all city administration officials to review the plans if they had any concerns about it. Water and sewer was... And police... Or, excuse me, Fire Chief Troxel both reviewed the plans this morning after our staff meeting. Chief Troxel and I drove back to review the site. He... As long as the driveways are updated and built to city standards, he said that he has no concerns relating to fire safety. And he did ask that a fire hydrant be installed on the premises, with the best location being somewhere on the... I guess that'd be the northeast side of the property, immediately east of building number five, somewhere in that land area there. And that would meet any requirements, as long as there's a six-inch line for fire safety with that site.
Okay. So by house number five?
Be in this... He didn't give any specifics, but just somewhere in this area right in here, he said, would be sufficient for a fire.
Is concern is that the nearest hydrant's too far away, I assume?
It is, and I believe, according to Chief Troxel, city code requires that fire hydrants, you must have at least one within 500 feet.
I think we already have two within 500 feet.
Yeah, I think so, too.
You know, we've got one right across the street from a flower shop, and we've got another one on Madison, right across from the other entrance. And both of them are fed by lines in excess of six inches with flow and pressure that are, you know, obviously within the tolerances of putting out residential fire. You know, I don't want to diminish anything, but getting a six-inch line up there is a whole different scenario than feeding residential three-quarter inch water taps.
Yeah, I would recommend that you just do a drawing that just shows kind of the radius where those two hydrants are, that you're within that 500 feet.
We'd be glad to do that.
Okay. And I think, when he says pave it, are you talking about turning radius, or are you talking about just gravel, or just so it is not gravel?
Correct. And, yeah, turning radii would be a concern as well.
Well, there is no way to... I mean, as far as a cul-de-sac is concerned, I mean...
No, he was referring to the turning radii to get off of Madison to the rear.
Oh, okay.
To get from here to there.
That's going to remain as is, which is pretty wide. I mean, I think that's what he's talking about, that what exists, which is that driveway coming up in Farley's entrance area there are, you know, maintained, or maintained at that height.
Just from the conversation I had with Chief Troxel, his recommendation, again, is just that this all be brought up to city standards.
And that was this morning?
That was this morning at about 11:00 AM.
That would have been great if we had had a discussion shortly after we submitted all these drawings.
Yeah, I'm a little concerned by that, too. Why was he...
We got these in two weeks ago. It's four hours.
This project's been talked about for quite some time. Why is the fire chief not known about it?
He has known about it. He just took the opportunity to review it this morning.
We told him today this was coming up.
Oh, I see.
Get track together.
The road... Excuse me, the roads that exist will, you know, be enhanced or improved, but we don't plan, or had not shown, any plan to change ingress or egress or any roads other than as they exist.
A number of residences exist currently on that loop there. I mean, there are probably three or four houses.
Watch out to the table here, so the microphones can get you.
Well, I'm just saying, I mean, as far... There are a number of residences that exist right now, and they obviously are protected for fire. Farther away, really, from Madison than anything that we plan to build. So we'll have an opportunity to discuss with, you know, to discuss that with him, I guess.
So it's... Okay, so what I'm hearing is that the hydrants are... There's hydrants within 500 feet of both directions.
That's correct, yeah.
Okay.
You know, I don't have a...
She'll fall in there.
No, that's why, yeah.
I don't really see it on this one either. I see manholes.
Within very close proximity where they are, there is a fire hydrant here. 500 feet, what's our scale here?
One inch equals 30 feet.
Right.
It's probably 24 by 36.
So you can see that right there. And then there's a hydrant.
Well, that's a recommendation. That's a recommendation.
Between this 500 radius and this 500 radius, and there already exist homes that are beyond this distance that are in here.
Yeah.
I mean, this is not an issue. That's not...
Yeah, I mean, it's quite possible. They're only, you know, they're single-family homes, so they might never have ever been brought to the fire chief's attention when they were built, so it's quite possible he never... There might be an issue still, but...
Well, I could certainly, if you want, locate the exact location of the hydrants and do two radiuses. Certainly brought them in.
If you're not, of course.
Way from there, okay. Yeah, and I see, you do have a water map, but it doesn't show the actual hydrant locations on this. It shows manholes and covers. Yeah, that's a water line.
One right here.
Okay.
And one right here. The other issue is number two, sewer.
Number two?
I don't know if we actually have 10 feet in between.
It's ownership.
EPA. Permits whatever.
We're talking about...
Which two lines are you referring to?
I assume they have standard guidelines, what you've got to do to get your permits.
We're talking about...
If there's a way around eight feet or ten.
I'm showing them actually one bit.
Yeah, that's what's...
I think that's what his concern was. He was worried about the fining one inch. The normal thing you do now is...
Okay, I could see some distance. I would think that the issue isn't the...
Well, they want the association to maintain the ownership of the infrastructure.
The amount of flat land available for that kind of excavation.
Your story line from your house to the street.
A number of trees.
The only issue is that it's a separation. Nobody's...
The impact.
The sort of promise to the tree commission that we would adhere to, and that's critical. So hopefully, it's kind of what is... It's obviously hard to respond to stuff without having a good time.
If you read what Scott had wrote.
Yeah.
I don't know. We need to find that out. And I understand what you're saying, if you're already committed to the shade tree commission, that the utility infrastructure would have to take precedence over that.
Well, again, it seems like we're going to be...
PTO is required.
Well, I think the PTI to install, I think, is what he's saying, to make sure that goes through proper channels. The way I read that, that's...
I mean, I'm sure we can work through this. Again, it's not the issue of having two digits, it's just a matter of...
I know they like to keep that distance in between for obvious reasons in terms of sewer and water. And I think that... I don't... I assume that's part of our code, not really written code.
It could be the states. And if they have to go through the EPA, which he says will be required, they'll just have to comply.
Okay. Other questions? Other issues? No?
I have one. I thought, when we talked about this some time back, there was some discussion about looking at that Madison Street entrance. I had identified it being, you know, the height as it came down. You've got a private driveway right next to it, paralleled, and I thought there was some indication that you would be looking at that for some improvement.
Yeah, well, the idea is that the lane that exists up above that is access to the garages. It's to our advantage to lower that as much as we can, really because of the difference in elevation between that road and the back, the lower off the basement of the units. The lower we get that roadway, the better it is for every reason. Well, it also... The better it is then for the steepness of the grade that comes up from Madison. So there is no magic here. Basically, in order to make something more comfortable and accessible, you either have to raise the bottom or lower the top, and our attempt will be... There's actually a gas transmission line up there that we've checked, and, you know, we know where it is, and we've talked to the gas company. So we have some limitations about how much we can lower that lane, but it's our intention for all these reasons I just talked about, that we're going to lower that. And that being the case, then, the access from Madison up and up to Mr. Farley's driveway will all be reworked as, I guess, as comfortably as we can to make access easier and, you know, just to improve the situation. So that's really what we're talking about. So we will do everything we can, subject to the topography that already exists there.
I think that's the impression I had, is that you're going to change the sort of slope when it's be as great.
Yeah, lower that, and, yeah, make that more gradual.
Easier for a fire truck to get.
And concrete trucks.
Yeah, that would help.
Moving vans.
Yeah. Other issues?
So when does that occur? I'm sorry, does that occur prior to construction or during the construction of the units that the road?
Oh, no, no, that would be actually one of the...
Sorry.
May as well just sit there.
That would be one of the first things we do, because to prepare for the foundations, it's critical that we establish the ultimate grade, and we're really not going to know until we get up there and start scraping away and then just keep monitoring the gas line, you know, get all that together. That would be one of the first things we do.
Okay, I think the confusion kind of arose. There was a... In your final plat information, there was a note that for design principles for building some roads, no roads will be constructed, or ingress and egress roadways currently exist. And I guess we take that to assume you're not doing any new right aways, you're just going to be...
No, we're going to improve what already exists.
Yeah, right.
Improve existing.
Right away.
Okay. Go on.
I'm going to stay here.
When was that again?
Okay, so what I'm hearing here is that the only thing that we have to look at is the... You're going to have to confer with the EPA and see what the requirements are for distance between sewer and water lines. Probably talk to Scott Lambert somewhere along the line in the process of this, but probably EPA first. Sounds like everything else is pretty much covered, if I understand it correctly. Is there anything else? Questions?
No, I mean, it's... The roadway's still a private roadway, though. You're not even going to own it, even when you make these improvements.
Correct.
The condominium association is not, so... And so it's not going to be a city road either, so...
It will not.
Okay.
And upon approval of this, I assume that the deed restrictions will start the motion for having that put in place, the proposed deed restrictions.
Right, upon filing of the final plat and after the three readings, correct?
Okay, yes.
Yep.
Okay, anything else? Motion for this? Or do you want me to do this? There is one variance that's required for this, as you know, which is the... Let's see if I can find it here. The only variance really that's covered is the two-acre footprint. This is less than two acres. A PUD has to be a minimum of two acres. So that's really the only variance that I'm seeing that's required from this. Is that what you read of it, Paul?
Correct, right.
John?
Yes.
Okay. I'm asking the experts over here.
There should be... There's no variance is required for setbacks or anything like that because of it's... Because it's a PUD. That's the point of the PUD, is so that you can create something where you don't have to follow standard code. And the variance for the acreage, you'd be approving it... You'd be recommending an approval to council, I believe, or you'd be... The planning commission would give a final approval here with the recommendation to council.
Grant the variance.
Yeah, council would actually grant the variance.
Okay. So why don't we... Is there anything else in terms of conditions upon approval of the water lines?
Yeah, the EPA, I think we need to include that, just in our...
Oh, sure. Okay.
Yeah, I don't know what to do about the fire chief's thing. It seems a little... A little late to be kind of asking him to do stuff, and also a little sort of sketch... I don't think he had full information when he looked at these two. Because it's, you know, I think if fire hydrants were located here, he wouldn't have a problem. You know, it's one of those things, out of sight, out of mind. They weren't on the drawings, so therefore, he assumes there's no fire hydrant nearby.
Well, he just... Rather than assume, I can... Chief Troxel was aware that there was hydrants on... That there was... That there's hydrants out there, that there was one on... Stating that there was one on Madison.
Okay.
He specifically told that to me.
Okay.
This morning, so that's...
And I think he's just looking at the safety factor for having these additional units built all the way back here. How about getting a hydrant back there in case we need to have the additional fire flow protection? It is late in the game, and I understand that. Everybody was a little busy last week when we went into that, but of course, we've been discussing this project long, you know, for months now.
There are actually residents beyond this. This isn't like the... We're going beyond any... But we're within a scope of existing houses.
But when development comes up, it is an opportunity sometimes to maybe increase what we have, you know, and have better measures in place. But if it meets the... You said there are going to be fire suppressed units? Fire suppression? Did I hear that from you, the planner? No?
No, they're individual residences.
They'll have smoke detectors.
Yeah, these are individual houses. Question, what do you... That tail end of the northeast piece of property there, we have parking, is that just going to stay fallow? Is that the case?
Stay what?
Stay fallow, nothing happens to it.
No, it'd be parking, just...
Just the beginning part.
You're talking about beyond the parking?
Beyond the parking, is it?
No, it's...
Tail end of land, that just sits? Okay.
That's where I brought David Ingram. David Ingram this weekend.
And along those lines, I did verbally spoke with Mr. Ingram this weekend and also this week. The shade tree commission did meet with Mr. Sol. They don't have any concerns about meeting the shade tree ordinance. They have not formalized their letter yet, but he said there should be no issues, so... And that will be coming.
Okay. There's a request to take about five minutes. Can we take five minutes to just get a call on something? Do you want to do that?
I would like to, if you wouldn't mind, for a five-minute recess.
Five-minute recess, then. Want to do that? Okay, go for it. Okay, thanks for holding on. We're back in, probably after some outside sources, the fire department. You stick there?
Yes, thank you. I appreciate everybody waiting while I got some confirmation from the departments. I'll start with the water and sewer. It is an EPA regulation about the 10-foot separation, or they can be encased. So I think that this is covered, as long as we say you comply with your EPA. That's something you'll work with them on, so... And it sounds to me like you might do the encasement because of the topography, but that's fine. The fire chief has concerns, but what he hasn't done and what needs to be done is a fire flow test on those two different hydrants there to see what the flow is. And so I would be asking that we just put in there that you would... That we'll have the fire flow test done, and then you'll work with the chief if it's deemed that there's not enough fire flow water there for the protective measures. Just wanted to get that clarified.
Okay, so really what you're saying is, too, with the fire flow, if it's adequate, no hydrant.
Right.
If it isn't adequate, then you're back to talk to him about a hydrant.
That's fine. Of course, then, that would raise the question, if the fire flow isn't sufficient for our residences that are within 500 feet, what about the other folks who exist and are served by a hydrant that possibly is not up to standards? So...
Well, okay, let's look at it this way. We're going to increase density here. So his consideration is, now that we're increasing density, we have to make sure it's adequate.
Okay, well...
You know, at least, you know, I understand we have a lot of areas that probably aren't adequate, and we try upgrading whenever possible. And I think that's one of the benchmarks I saw, and one of the comprehensive plan things, increasing all the diameters of pipes so we have fire flow. But that would be... We're having an intensification of this particular area and lot. There's a difference between going from a business that's shut down and nobody's living there to adjacent... You know, there are adjacent houses that might not be served well with the present water system, but the idea of adding, you know, seven more residences, it's a change of condition.
Yeah, that's fair. That's fine, that's very fair. We'll be happy to work through that.
We'll work with him.
Okay. Anything else? I saw a lot of discussions in the five minutes there, did you see anything that needs to be added?
The discussion was about the EPA.
Okay. Okay. I guess I'll put forward the motion. I'm going to accept the final plat for the planning development of 252 East State Street with a variance for the middle area of two acres, variance for 210905, which requires a minimum of two acres, and conditional upon the EPA requirements and working with the hydrant or the fire flow necessary to make it work.
Second.
Any discussion on this? Are you sure? Any more discussion? Okay, how do you vote? Everybody favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
And good luck with it. Looks good. Always needs tweaking, I'm sure, but we'll see what happens.
And, you know, if they can get at some point together, I'd be glad to meet them out there at some point if they want to check the pressure and flow. I certainly know what the, you know, what the EPA rules are, the limits are on that, and if they're inadequate, I don't know how we fix that, but, you know, we'll work with you guys.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else? No?
Do you know how that's done? Is that a fire department does there, or is there a third party?
Fire department does. That's part of their project. Number four, communications. Do you have any communication?
I have, for each planning commissioner member, the publication of the American Planning Association.
And this is for winter of 2009.
And the 2009 American Planning Association Conference. And I do think it'd be beneficial for us to send our planner.
We should consider that. Okay, we're still trying to have a meeting here, so if anybody's ready to go, you can go, or you can stay. Let's see, in terms of communications, the only thing I would say is we still need to look at the recommendations for task force for the sign... Task force. I've looked over some of it, we can still go with that. I do want to mention tomorrow night, 6:30, we're going to have our town hall meeting at the community center. This is to look at the benchmarks and the... And how our comprehensive plan is doing. And that's 6:30 to 8:30, be there and participate. And that's... And I hope to have another member on sooner than later, so we have a full permission. And that's all I have on my communication. Do you need to add anything?
Uh, no, no.
Okay. Paula? Report from the city planner.
I don't have much prepared today. Comprehensive plan town hall meeting tomorrow evening at 6:30.
Okay.
I would encourage all members of the planning commission to please attend.
I plan to be there.
Your input will be greatly appreciated. We are having a follow-up meeting after, on March 12th, which will be kind of a report on what happens tomorrow evening and what the comprehensive plan advisory committee will be moving forward from there. So hopefully, we should have a comprehensive plan advisory committee meeting on Monday to discuss the meeting tomorrow evening, and then we'll proceed from there.
Okay. Let's see, other things. I believe we'll have most of our department heads there to answer any technical questions that need to be answered, so we can have it based in information and have the benchmark put together. So anything else? No?
That's all I have for this afternoon.
Okay. Okay, number six is opportunity for citizens to speak about items not covered on the agenda. Does anybody wish to speak? Okay. Announcements and other business. Our next meeting will be February 18th, 12:00 PM, as always. I don't really have any other business that I can think of. Disposition of minutes. Minutes are from January 21st, 2009. I believe you have copies of them. Do I have a motion to accept them?
Motion to accept.
I'll second that.
I wasn't here.
You weren't here? But they read well.
Right.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
So I guess they've been approved. Motion to adjourn.